Call what I, you know, dead area. You got dead area. You got the links, the connectors that are dead. And so what that means is you don't have to ask, for instance, you wouldn't have to ask for grant funding to improve FM 539 or Highway 87. It would just be a connector. But you have land on either side of that that would be in the captured appraised value of that, which may or may not be something that you wanted. That's option two. A single zone with linkups. The third option is multiple zones. And some of those zones might include some linkup, linkup roads. But you cut down your dead area and you cut, you cut down your captured appraised value. Now, I, I will tell you that maybe counties likely will go PAC method. Single zone, one project in the zone, very efficient, easy, and ask for grant funding from TechDOT on all the rest. As late as last week, somebody at TechDOT said, oh yeah, that's okay. The number two engineer from TechDOT who's spoken publically said that's okay. The lawyers given the webinar for PAC, they said that's okay. We just don't see that in the language of the statutes. But for those counties that want to do it that way, there's some risk. Hope they're right. But I don't get to make that call.
When you say the risk, the funding.
Here's the deal. If they're right, that's the way to go. Nobody knows if they're right. TechDOT personnel saying that's how we're going to interpret this. In my life, I've seen.
But isn't there some risk in all of these that doesn't just do a zone?
Yes, sir. There's, there's risk in the whole way, but.
Yeah, because if you.
But that's, that's, that's an easy way to do it. The risk is when you get down to the grant application, TechDOT says, well, those people weren't speaking, you know, effectively for our agency. We don't like the idea that, that you're asking for money on all these other roads. We're either going to kick you out of the applicant pool, or, which I think is a pretty low risk, or we'll give you money for this one, but we're not going to give you the money for those because they're not the zone.
But, but the, the thing about that, the 220 million designated, they're going, they're, they're not going to get used for theirs anyway, so they don't have any.
Yeah, it's, it's got to go to the county, so other counties will get your allocation. So, so, so the question becomes, how do you want to balance the competing risk issues? And the lawyer can't make that call. I just want to make sure that you know everything I know about what's being said about the, the certain.
Are you representing any of the other counties in our general area?
Yes, representing McMullen County. Tom Pollens over at Bastrop County this morning, they're, they're trying to decide whether they want to do it.
He was, he was down in Eyewold County the other day when I called you, but didn't, you know, not doing that one?
We hadn't been called back. I don't know if they're going to proceed. We, that, that, you know, that their allocation's a little higher than yours. We, we have some counties that are, that we work for on a regular basis that are in the million dollar range who have decided not to do this one because they don't want to fool with all this stuff that we're talking about now. So what that means is the grant pool gets bigger for the, for the counties that do participate in.
And there'll be some because of timing and because of, of this, right here, this road status report. To that, because we know that there are very few counties that are completing this. There are going to be a number of counties that aren't going to do it.
Well, I think there's a lot of counties also worried about the tax base on all that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, and, and.
They gotta be worried with that.
Absolutely.
I, I, I want to make sure that y'all have everything I got to tell you understood before you jump off and decide how, how, how you want to draw your zone. Again, the PAC recommendation is really easy to, to identify and do. Option two, based on your configuration, seems a little unnecessary in terms of the, the length of the connectors that you have to have. So option three, the multiple zones to me would be the recommendations from us based on the risk analysis. But still, if you want to do, you know, the simple one.
And if you do a simple one, how big does it need to be? What, what do they?
Nobody tells.
So it could be as simple as taking Kaufman Road and making that a zone. And a hundred foot on each side of it and say, okay.
Well, the more feed you add to it, the more tax base it's going to get.
Oh, no, I understand. But, but all I'm saying is you're talking, it could be one road.
Is there any downside to the multiple zones?
Yes. Let's say, let's say you draw three, three or four zones. And then your list of transportation infrastructure projects, you know, your prioritized list and the money that you're allocated, you don't get for whatever, however you prioritize it. You end up having a zone that you didn't do anything in. Or you only got funding for, you know, eight hundred thousand and that got to eat up quick. So you have multiple zones that are not being used. Well, if you can opt out, you're good. You're, I mean, you can, you can quit, you can rescind and terminate and take a public vote. There would, there would be a way, you know, to, from an administrator's standpoint, to do it if the law allows it. We just don't see right now in the express language.
But the legislature could act in two years.
They could. The AG could write an opinion. TechDOT might even be able to pass an administrative regulation, but I doubt they will.
Is there any precedent with other kinds of zones?
Those, those, those tax increment financing have, have opted out. Those statutes.
Have opted out from any.
These, yeah, statutes were done a little quicker and my judgment, some of the laws were drafted. But again, I'm just a lawyer, I'm not a legislator or a legislative aide. A lot of times with the statute, the first time is not the best, best wording. You, you had it modified and adjusted, but can't predict that that would happen. If the people that are arguing right now that, yeah, you can opt out, are correct, then there's very little risk with multiple zones. Now, what with the risk? Well, let's say my grandmother lives down County Road 202 and she wants her road fixed and she lacks the idea of that tax increment money that'll come in and it's going to force y'all to fix her road. That's the risk, quitting on a zone. The other argument is, you know, you can, you can, you can make a contrary argument for the creation of, of a zone, so. But to get squarely on the point that's in your view, is the risk, downside risk with multiple zones? Answer, yes, if you cannot opt out and you're stuck with them. And our written position, on the summary letter that we gave Wilson County of the project indicated that we saw no express authority right now in the language of the statutes that allows an opt out. We look closely at it. Again, that's, that's different than what other people are saying, I understand that. There's some fine lawyers and fine people who have differences of opinion on that. But from a cautious standpoint, let's give you the advice that we think is necessary given the lack of any opt out language that we can read in the statutes. What do you think, Paul?
So, so if you do.
He said three or four.
But how would he tie, tie all these in?
I guess you do, like we just got four, you tie them in, state highways or.
Yeah, I think so long as you have a zone and, and your projects, zones, plural, and projects are inside the zone, I think you can make a, a local discretionary decision about which projects go first.
But when you do a zone, just one zone, how much, how big is that zone?
It's up to you.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about just doing the fifty or a hundred feet. If you create one where.
Back here, if we make a zone here, how do you tie this and this all into this zone? Like we did.
I just have to be.
Well, why not then just do it like we're doing there because.
Well, look, if you created, let's say you did all of yours in one zone.
The answer is yes, sir. That's, that's option two, basically. One zone for the whole county with connectors.
That would be the easiest and simple for us, I think.
But you've got, for instance, on connectors that link, link roads to, to, to make it contiguous, you're going to have dead area, you're going to have dead area, you're going to, you're going to have captured appraised value of that on roads that you're not asking for grant funding.
If you didn't have to connect these two and this was a separate zone, you could do away with that. Do away with that.
Because the more you connect, the more.
Do away with all of that.
But, well, but, but I have to come over and get that just a little. Since that's in green right here. Down toward me. Up from your end. We're talking about, you know, you could do.
Right, you could do away with this right here.
Yeah.
And then from there to there, but you would still.
But you're going to have to go over here and connect, this would have to be connected to that. So you get rid of that, but you're going to have to come down here to tie into that. So they have to be contiguous in terms of your county. Now, you can use things like.
So you could, instead of doing, well, no, because you got to connect.
But I guess that the dead zone though.
The only thing, we're going to increase.
And just go down the county lines, what you're saying. The tax increase in that area. The property owners. Yeah, the, the property owner won't pay no more or no extra.
Right.
We're just taking it away from the actual budget of the county.
Based on your tax rate, a piece of it goes into a restricted account and the rest of it goes to.
Well, it's really not effective for nothing other than. So it would be simpler to have one zone. To me.
Other, other than the restricted account.
Yes, okay. And so that's, that's where we continue respectfully with all the zones. Why you want it standard because we're trying to help minimize the captured appraised value. Because our client perceives that as a potential time to handle budget time issue. Other counties don't look at it that way, but they all appear to, and that's a reasonable way to look at it. But.
Obviously, the idea was TechDOT was setting it up so that there wouldn't be, or the legislature, so there wouldn't be a need to pull another 254 million or whatever it was, that's a member of county. How much of, how many other millions they put into this? If you set up a big zone, there'd be funds coming in to repair those roads and they won't be asked again.
Then the idea would be to, to ensure that the counties in the future would use locals, exactly, on a, on a regular basis.
As a transport vet. And maybe even for the repair of FM's and so forth within the.
Well, what they're doing, like in the South County, what they're doing, when they're creating that, with FM roads, the county and the state department, highway department are combining together because they were going to make them the gravel road forever. Now they're going back to paint road, but the money out of there, they're going to get that percentage of and paint the whole road and share the gravel road.
So, so I could foresee, I don't know if they would have done, I could foresee all of these being turned in from all the counties. And so you and I are sitting there and we're two decision makers for TechDOT about this. And so we start, not that we're going to handle it, but we start going through these. And what we say is, okay, what we're going to do is counties that set up a zone that encompasses a larger map, like everything south of eighty-seven, ninety-seven here. Those are going to be top tier counties. You know, we're going to take a look at them, they've done what we wanted, we're going to fund them big time. And then we'll take a look at the counties that do this little snaking approach and we'll put them in tier two. And then we're going to take a look at the ones that did one little bitty isolated spot and we're going to fund them, but we're going to put them in tier three. Is that a possibility?
Possibility. I don't know which way it would go. We have heard, I got a friend that's an engineer from West Texas. Colleague, and he's helping us, one of our clients in West Texas. But he was at a meeting with TechDOT last Friday in Austin on unrelated matters. And got to talking to somebody about, you know, this project. Thinking I get it, has a cold box check. That's what's going to happen in TechDOT. That's the phrase that's used. They don't have the time. They weren't given enough money to get out the microscope with a magnifying glass.
So, so did, did, so the box check, did they, did they do a zone? Yes, they did. Did they do the report? Yes, they did. Have they completed? Yes, they did.
Prioritized list of projects.
How much did they request?
And also, if, 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 for instance, the, the road report says it's going to cost five hundred thousand to fix something and then the, the grant application says it's going to cost three million to fix it. Slow down a little bit, can you explain the difference, that kind of stuff? There will be some effort at grant application review time to look at the infrastructure project costs, estimated costs, make sure that they're reasonably aligned on this preliminary stuff, you get, you get the impression it's just low level looking.
Let me, let me, you said something. Go back to this road status report.
Okay.
We've never done these, not the only one.
No, we're good on.
Again, the, the way, the approach I took with this is I looked at my pavement first of all. And my pavement was considered good in general except for if I had a specific road that was bad, then it didn't get good. It got fair or poor, just talking pavement. Now, I don't, and if the pavement was not impacted by the oil business, but it was poor pavement, I listed it as poor. I listed the reason that it was poor, but didn't tie it into the oil business because it did not. And I did not put an estimated cost of repairs because right now, within my budget, I don't have the money to repair it. Am I going to need to list the cost of repairs even though I can't afford to repair it?
Let me speak to the road report.
Okay, yeah, that's probably important for us to know.
There's a statute that seventeen forty-seven amended. That statute is two fifty-one point zero one eight of the Transportation Code. And it says in so many words that if you're working under a road system in the county where the commissioners are, per ex officio, road, road commissioners, which, which is what you all get. Or if you're on a, under a unified system on one of the, one of the system types designated by chapter two fifty-two of the Transportation Code, either one, then on your periodic reports, including the one that an ex officio road commissioner has to file and get approved by the Commissioners Court and involved with the grand jury in the ninth month of each calendar year. Even that one. You have to say what the primary cause of the degradation was, if reasonably ascertainable, and how much it will cost to fix it. It doesn't say even though you don't have that much in your budget. So what we want to do at, on this, on this project is to make sure that we've got the road reports, just like the statute says. How to do it, there's as many methods out there as there are commissioners and officers. But the reason I'm saying it is because the TechDOT grant application rules say that we must attach a copy of the road reports to the grant application. So what does that tell us? It tells us that there is a connect the dot exercise here. There are many roads in your county that appear to have been primarily degraded because of oil or gas activity traffic. But there are some roads in your road report, for instance, for your precinct that are not oil and gas activity torn up roads. If you can reasonably ascertain the cause of the degradation in your statutory road report, you're supposed to say. And what I'm suggesting to you is that we have some language that if you know, you know, what it was, we got to put it. If you know what the primary cause of the damage is, we have to put it.
And, and, and I, on mine, I've done that. But, but I haven't gone in and estimated the cost of repair to that road because it was unrelated to, it's not one of my roads that's on the list.
You'll need to.
Okay.
You'll need to, and here's the reason. I believe the statutory authority requires it. And there needs to be, in my opinion, a way to connect what we say in the grant to what we say in the road reports to show them that we're not embarrassing it. We're not, we're also not de-minimizing it, minimizing it. We're, we're, we're saying, we said it here, we said it here, give us the money.
I mean, those, those actually in favor that you said, they have them.
He also said, Paul, that Larry, and this, and again, I guess a lawyer's interpretation or even tech, like your four seventeen? Even though it's all the gas and all trucks on it, but it's not primarily all that king for your rigs and, and your fracking trucks and that sort of stuff. Even though they have a yard set up there, I mean, I'm not saying.
No, I, I'm not, I'm just listening to what you're saying.
I'm not saying it don't qualify.
Who's opinion?
Exactly.
It's the reasonable belief of the commissioner who signs the road report. Now, if somebody from Austin or Dale, you know, comes and says, hey, what is this? That's not right. That's somebody's opinion.
Because I, because I know that they, one of the counties.
I, I want to make.
The, the, the only thing, the only activity they got is a pipeline. That's it. You know, and they really don't qualify because they don't have no activity. It's just a pipeline going through their county.
There's no traffic associated with the pipeline.
Exactly, so then the question was brought up, like thorough traffic, you know, road that has thorough traffic, you know, they. And they, and they were kind of saying it don't qualify because it's old.
Yeah, and, and there's some other people who are saying, yeah, go ahead and say.
Exactly.
Couple of questions. On, on this zone, the, the people paying the taxes, they, they won't be affected? I mean, it, it has nothing, they, they're nothing to do with them, they, I mean.
Doesn't affect the tax rate, doesn't affect, doesn't.
And they don't, they don't have to say, well, understand that this is going to this or that or anything like that?
If a road is improved and a facility's placed that increases the value, then, like you can see, increased property values, the better roads all over the country.
But that would depend on whether it's a zone or not. Okay, that, that, I felt like that was an answer, but I want to be sure before I move ahead and say what, what I'm going to say. That. Either way we do this, if you do it the way he said, multiple zones, if you do it with a continuous zone or if you do one zone or whatever, you're going to have a very minimal effect on the tax.
Sir, bring the checkbook.
Regardless of what's done. So, and I think any of them is court action could, could rule because none of them specifically, and none of them really filed with the law, so. I think you just pick one and it's, it's not a bad gamble for what the amount of money that's there. You pick one and go with it and, and if our attorney thinks that it's multiple ones, I think that's what we go with. I think be comfortable with what he's going with and everything.
It's the most careful advice I could give you, but it's not the most easiest exercise.
Now, well, we don't care that two commissioners won't do that.
Well, we've pretty well done it, so that, that, that's really not an issue. It might be an issue from the amount of time that we need to pay the, the, for the, the attorney from the standpoint of whatever they have to do, if it's more expensive to set up multiple zones than, than this contiguous zone.
It is, it's more mapping, it's more, more looking, uh, uh, making sure the maps are correct, but.
But that, but back to this, you know, this is the basis.
That, that's, that's where a lot of time is going to be needed to be spent locally. Making, making sure that we have a road report structure that's.
And that's kind of regardless of whether we do this or not.
Yeah.
Yes, although, right, we, we've never filed this and my guess is if we didn't do this, we probably wouldn't until we report it, just like all the other counties.
I had to tell you about it, it's something that as we go through the different opportunities come up that we don't even know about now that if it's done, it's, it's in our favor to have it done.
Not, not everybody knows everything. You know, I didn't, I, I practiced as the DA in my home, criminal DA in my home county for twelve years and I didn't know about it. But I, I was representing and I didn't know about it.
And it's, let, let, I'm frightened of this report a little bit now. So let me ask you a couple of questions. If you have, um, everybody, you know, I've got two hundred and thirty something miles, he's got two sixty or fifty or whatever it is. I talked about four roads. So I, so I have a, a road north of town, paint road, it's horrible, been horrible, some base problems. It needs to be redone from coast to coast. I can figure out how much it would cost to do it, not part of the program, not asking for money for it. So I need to list that on here. If I've got another road that I've listed as poor for whatever reason, then I've already put down the reason for it and I just need to figure out the, you know, the solution and the cost associated with it, even though I don't have the money to do it. What about roads? I've listed my base covered roads as fair because a base covered road that's good today is fair tomorrow and it's poor down the road and then it's good again. That's the way both base covered roads are.
Okay.
And so I didn't, you know, do I have to have a cost estimate for roads that are fair? The quick, the question I have is, am I going to have to go through every line item on here, item on here, and look at it and say, um, whatever the street or the road is, here's what I'm going to spend on that road during this period of time? Or can I do it only for four roads?
In a perfect world, every, every road, but.
Because that, that, there's no way. I'm going to speak for myself and, and probably for some of my associates here. There's no way that, well, there's always a way, but it's going to be very doubtful that we're going to be able to have this report done to that extent within the timeframe that we have to submit this to.
But you know.
Qualify for.
And he mentioned, I want to go, it's your opinion on those roads. You, you could sit down and write that from your knowledge of those roads. The commissioner in Gonzalez County or whatever county is not going to have the same opinion as you. Or anybody else is, is event back, so.
And all four of us want to.
Well, you, you know where your good roads are, you've got.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've already identified those.
So what I'm saying is, whatever you put on there is whatever you put on there.
The, the way I did it, like when you say fair and it's a gravel road, I just put it, it needs more material, more base material. And then for improvement, say, well, we need to be repaid, we need to be paid. And I just put the estimate cost and that was it.
You could, you could make a, you could take a position in your opinion. I'm sorry, Christian Powell, were you fixing to say something or is it?
No, go ahead, no.
To where you only address cost estimates on four. And, and as to the, the good and fair, uh, to say, routine maintenance for the upcoming year, as funds allow. You know, that, that.
You know, I, I, I just have a problem with putting something down that I know isn't right, just to answer a question. You know what I mean?
But you put down what you believe to be right.
Yes, sir. That, that is.
You can take an average, that's what I'm gonna do.
I mean, you.
Take an average, because there's no way you can come up with a solid number.
And I was wrong one time back in 19.
1903, I believe it was, I saw it. I, I don't know how we could come up with a solid number to fix the road, because you never know what you're gonna do till.
That's exactly right. And it changes. Here, here's what I do, ready? Road report. Can you identify a road that's gonna go on the grant application?
Right.
That has the primary degradation of, of the cause.
Okay.
Be as precise as you can.
Absolutely.
Because that number needs to be in the same ballpark figure as the number we're asking for.
Well, and, and for those, you know, I thought it'd be a description of, I need so many yards of base material, and here's the cost associated with the base material. Again, I need to improve the, the sub base, and I need to do that by adding Portland cement or whatever it is, and here's how many, you know, just a price that.
Do they need to go into that much detail on the road condition report?
Well, there's gotta be.
That's the asterisk part I was talking about.
There would, there would be a way to, to take the task and summarize them in short answer form, because Techstock is not, I don't think that I have the time or the.
Now, they said enough, that, I mean, so what you would just do, what I'm gonna do is figure out an average of what it would cost per mile to fix a.
Repair a road, a basic gravel road.
It'd be the most simple and easiest way, and you, you were, yeah, it's gonna vary. We'd go with the high numbers for Techstock, when you go for that.
Yeah.
If, if you're just adding base and working the base in, that's one thing, but if you've got it, you know, you can add all kinds of base, in my opinion, to some of these areas. And if you don't take care of the substructure, then it's gonna continue. When you start looking at asphalt road, that's totally a different animal. Like, when you look at gravel based road, with what I have.
And you, if you need a asphalt road that need to be done, just put, redo the whole road.
But you can't, you can't sit there and to me brainstorm yourself. You know?
Too much stuff that.
I'm just gonna do an average, I think that's the most simple and easiest way. You know?
I did it just simple, I mean, if they like it, they'll like it, they can always send it back.
I would think, like you said, the roads that we're gonna turn in for the Techstock grant.
Well, the text one is different.
And then go with the high number. Well, and, and I guess it might, I guess I missed it, my understanding was that if you have a road that is part of the Techstock grant, that, um, that you would list, um, what the problem is associated with it, um, the basic problem. It would be, you know, this one I listed as an oil rig tract, uh, vacuum trucks, gravel trucks. Those are all associated with it. And then description of the improvements, it might be a matter of adding six inches of base, a water rolling or whatever. And then we were supposed to have an asterisk, and I thought the asterisk was to where you got into more detail about what it was you were gonna do. Because you.
Or maybe not.
Well, you're gonna need that detail either way then for your, um.
Prioritize this road report.
Yeah.
Of a road, but not, but not for this. Important, you don't need it. No, no, that, that, that's.
Just for the, the prioritized list.
That, that's for the submission list to Techstock.
You're gonna go through those motions to determine your estimated repair.
Cost repairs.
Yeah.
But then for Techstock, I was under the impression we had an asterisk, and those items that, that, is that what you heard? That, that, that we go through this list, we will list the, let's say for this particular road, it's gonna cost $85,000 to repair it. So we put that on this list, estimated cost $85,000, and then we talked about putting an asterisk next to it. And then on another form, we would go in and say county road 483, restate the problem, and then break it down and say that, you know, this particular road is, is 5.276 miles long, and that quite frankly, we need to add six inches of base material to the entire road. Here's the cost of that material delivered, that there are portions of that road where the substructure needs to be dealt with from a different way. And here's the cost for whatever it is to do the substructure. And then there's gonna have to be something, I would think, to where you, you figure the use of your, your, your equipment, your, your fuel and everything else. Because that, that works into the cost.
Well, I mean.
It's the cost to redo it.
Right, when you do something like that for those grants, it's.
Like they're like.
Yeah, that's, that's your scope of work.
Your scope of work, you get a, a time sheet or a sheet like that, and you write down everything, and you get all your invoices together.
Now, maybe I don't need to get that breakdown to them at that point. But, but I need to figure all that into the breakdown, otherwise, you know, I have a job that I've done at $80,000, and then I think about, oh my gosh, I've spent. It doesn't take long to spend $20,000 or $10,000 worth of diesel.
They said it's the same thing as you were doing another grant, that when we did it, remember? The same thing, you just gotta keep up when you're in.
Yes, sir, I've seen that. You see, this is off the Techstock website. And, and, and that's just for the prioritized list, that's not for the whole.
Huh?
No, that's road condition report. That's the list you submitted to Techstock.
Yeah, yes, but what I'm getting at is, there could be extra pages attached to amplify the positions.
Yes.
But.
Longer to get all your invoices and everything.
Goes right.
Prioritize and everything, but just.
You don't have a lot of time.
You just turn it in, and whatever you turn in, I'll take reimbursement. Take your那份.
But, you know, I guess my issue is that if I'm, if I'm gonna do this, I'd rather make an A than.
But you have to have all your.
If you know what I mean.
What you spend on material, yeah.
I can do see my support, it comes pretty easy to me.
Time sheets and everything.
I'd, I'd rather turn in an A.
Road report and everything.
What, given the option?
What I wanna do is hear from counsel and auditor that, y'all can, listening and everything, I wanna make sure that y'all had an opportunity to speak to the issues, and discuss it if you want to. On how to draw a zone, and the idea of the capture appraisal value, and not the road reports, I mean, that's kinda out of our, 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 the idea of measuring this, this issue.
I'm in vagrant, going with your recommendation.
Well, now, I wanna make sure. Do you understand option one, is it, is your way to go?
I do. But, you know, and I don't wanna give my own interpretation of the statute, but somehow that doesn't prove to me regardless of what tax is. From, you know, I've gotta file for the stuff that I've studied too. I, I, I think that's a too risky. I think the multiple zones are.
So what we could do is we could just set up a zone for precinct two, three, and four, for where they have roads. That would simplify it somewhat.
And then connect them. So some of your inside precincts, some of them.
Yeah, yeah, and they all have to be contiguous. And, and so.
There'd be some lengths that are, that are dead.
Okay, and the width of, of that zone, what is it, 50, what you're gonna do for it?
Well, it could be 50, 70, if, if it's from center line, then I'd say 100 foot's not a bad deal, because.
100 feet from the center line on each side, so that's a 200 foot swath.
That's a 200 foot.
Now, I, I, I guess the question that I would have, which would be the easiest for, uh, the appraisal district? You know, the jud, the judge talked about, uh, the way, I guess Techstock does it, and it's fence post to fence post is their road. And, and whether we just said, okay, what we're talking about for the appraisal district is that you go 50 foot from the fence post. Would that be easier for them, or would it be easier for them to do center line?
Yeah, yeah, center line would be easier.
Okay.
Yeah.
The road is, will show up on the area.
So you do 100, and you got a 44.
You got 80 foot of property. We can do 75, and then you got, what is it, 55 foot of, and 75 is fine. I don't, I don't really care.
I don't either, because it's not gonna affect the taxpayers or the landowner. All it's gonna do is take, if it has any increase, it's gonna take the money from actual budget or our budget.
Exactly.
Is all it's gonna do.
The reason that we recommended 100 feet on each side of the center line, so you have a 200 foot swath. You know, that, when you draw them on the maps, uh, uh, we haven't done any of those maps yet for you, but they look like yellow caterpillars. You know, the aerial photographs, you got this yellow caterpillar going down the road, and it's got the center line marked in red, and you got 100 feet on each side. And that's GIS drawing the scale map.
Excuse me, they have 200 foot swath.
Yeah, it's center line.
So you, you're taking essentially out of a lot of these roads, 80 foot on each side.
Yeah.
Is what you're doing. Now, if you get to 417, assuming that qualifies, you know, that's, that right of ways is 120, 130 foot wide, so you're, you're not taking much.
I know.
But you're, but you're taking something, and it's consistent.
And, and the reason I'm saying why we recommend 100 is this. If somebody wants to criticize us for drawing a skinny zone, I wanna be able to say, now wait a minute. You know, there's, we're, we're past the barbed wire fence, I'm using that phrasing, but, you know, we're on to somebody's, we're, we're off the public thoroughfare, we're off the right of way. We're on to somebody's private land, assuming that nobody gets taxed for the road. If there's a capture appraisal value effect here, it exists, we drew it on purpose that way. Make sure that there was. An arithmetic problem every time. And that's it, that, that gets done. And, and then the idea of, of multiple zones, um, y'all understand the idea?
Yes, sir. How does it work with multiple zones or, or creating a board?
This one finishes.
The board, no, it's a board.
We have to have three boards?
No, sir. Well, technically you would, but.
What I thought.
But, but the same people could be on each board.
Okay.
And that had.
Cause each zone have to have their board, right?
Yes. And, and the, the zone will be, each zone will have a, a separate set of documents and advisory board. Y'all have to define the duties and responsibilities of the advisory board, but I would recommend to you that the board is created at the time of the zone vote. The zone vote has to happen at least 30 days after the public hearing, but at the time of the zone vote, you create your advisory board. Now you're looking at, you've got the zone, you've got the advisory board, you've got the grant application beginning time, beginning on February the 7th. So, and we recommend that when the grant application gets prepared by council and staff, the advisory board needs to look at it. Have to say, yeah, help us, you know, if that's what they wanna do, help us prepare it and look at it as it's being developed, but then have the advisory board actually meet and say, hopefully, yes, we, we vote to recommend to the body, to the commissioners' court, that this grant application be approved. And then the commissioners' court, in another meeting, uh, set up pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, would say, okay. I would look at this grant application, looks good, vote, send it in to Techstock. What that means is that we need to talk about scheduling. I talked about it the other day. Okay. There was some word floating around out of West Texas that some legislative boards were maybe talking to Techstock about extending the application period. Right now, it begins February the 7th through February 14th. Haven't heard any more about that. If they did it, they'd have, the commission would have to meet, and they don't meet again until January, I think. So, you know, the, the idea of them changing the rules about the application period after everybody's spent all this time and money running towards February the 7th is, is promoting, I judge, to happen. Well, let's assume that February the 7th is still the first step. What we like the idea to leave is that your zone vote needs to happen on or before Friday, January the 31st.
We, we have looked at setting it up for Monday, January the 27th.
Okay.
That's a regular commissioners' court day.
Right, and that would give us plenty of time for the, for the extra step of to, to make sure that the grant application is good, and then have the advisory board meet, look at it, hopefully approve it, and then the commissioners' court meet on the recommendation of the advisory board to formally approve the submission of the grant.
And, and we're gonna point the advisory board on the 27th, so that's correct.
Okay.
January 27th.
Right. Zone vote is the advisory board, zone vote, and the, uh. Create a special account.
And then we were gonna be gone, commissioners are gone the following week to that conference, and I can't recall, um, we had to meet one more time, and I can't remember if we were gonna do that the 10th. We, we, we were gonna have, we were gonna point the board on the 27th. We were hopefully gonna give them a copy of some of the basic information to give them a chance to review it, and give them several days to review it. But I can't remember what the final.
What day of the week is Friday, is 27th?
Monday.
Okay, so that's the Monday before February 3rd, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so.
On the 30th, January 30th is when we were gonna have the advisory board to review and recommend the application.
That would be posted?
Yes.
Yes, and then on Monday the 3rd was gonna be a special commissioners' court meeting.
Before y'all went to the conference. Okay, that would work.
Yeah.
All right, so let's, let's do, if you wanna vote on 27 January, that's some vote, then the commissioners' court must conduct and complete a public hearing, 27th of this month is what we're just gonna. That's, that's what you do, I let you walk down the house without my calendar. Do y'all have a calendar, I can do it here, let's make really true about some.
I've got one on my, I'm, I'm on it right now. We have one, Judge, 20 years ago. If you count the days. Here we go, here's one. From the 27th to the 27th, we get 30 days.
Okay.
I do believe it.
Wanna meet, uh, and create a zone on January, Monday, January the 27th, correct?
Yes, it's correct.
All right, so don't count the 27th. So there's 26 days in January. And then December 31st, 27th, 28th, 29th, and 30th. So if you have your public hearing on December the 27th, which is the Friday after Christmas.
Next Friday.
Okay. Then, that's 1, 2, 3, 4, plus 26 is 30. So January 27th would be the 31st day, that would be time.
That's what we have in mind.
So what that means is, if you're gonna hold your public hearing on December the 27th, you must get notice in the newspaper at least seven days ahead of time, so.
Like yesterday?
No, well, for the local paper. Needs to be in a paper general circulation. Your local publishing deadlines do not work.
We'll have to do the San Antonio paper.
All right, I checked with the website. All right, I checked with the website, but, uh, to get something in the newspaper on Thursday. You have to have it in the day before about five o'clock, so, uh, Thursday, this Thursday is the nineteenth. Let's assume that it was the nineteenth that it was in the newspaper. You'd have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the seventh day would be the twenty-sixth, the eighth day would be the twenty-seventh, that's what I would recommend. Okay, if you have a newspaper no later than nineteenth December, today's the sixth. Actually, we could work hard to get it, get it rigged and in the news, set up and in the newspaper, maybe before the R and D.
Sooner or later. Did you know?
No, it doesn't have to be created by the time of the public hearing, but.
Wait, can't be.
It's a good idea.
Shouldn't be a problem.
It's a good idea if we know now what the proposed area will look like. We can say it, I've got a way to describe it. Okay, but be a list of the public roads. And then we'd say from the center line plus, now again, I recommend a hundred feet, it's up to us.
That's fine. What I'm saying is the zone, actual zone, that ain't created by then.
No, no, but, but we have to, but, but we have, the best practice, sir, would be to put in the newspaper. The area that y'all been talking about right now for the proposed zone, and it might get smaller.
Would be zones.
Or with the newspaper notice that I recommend says the creation of one more. And the energy investment.
Well, and, and there's no reason that, that we can't have, I mean, a map with three zones, zones drawn on it. You know, you could pretty well do that as we set right here. Because if we're talking about doing one that encompasses precinct two, precinct three, and precinct four, those are, those are pretty clear.
There would be a way to generally describe the roads, the center lines, and the feet on either side, it, to, to be broad. And then the purpose of public hearing is to get public comment on the creation of any zone or the.